We'll go ahead and call the mayoral order and welcome all of our guests. We're happy to have you with us tonight. And at this time, we'll say we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, we have Raywood Jackson with us. We're happy to have you with us, Raywood.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
And see you out and about and doing things. So, Raywood will give our invitation.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this day and for the blessings of life you bless us with each day. We fail to thank you for that daily, and Father, forgive us of that. Thank you for this time that we can come together in an occasion like this, and thank you for the fact, Father, that you've blessed us and the fact that we live in a country where we can come together and discuss the business of communities and towns and the state. And, Father, we just thank you for that. We're blessed to live in a country where we're able to do that, and we thank you for that each and every day. Thank you for this mayor and council for the work that they do, for leading them, guiding them, and directing them in the ways that you'd have them to go to lead our community, Father. We thank you for each one of them and ask a special blessing on them at this time. Ask you to forgive us of our sins and our shortcomings and be with us through the remainder of this meeting tonight, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
At this time, I recommend that we approve minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Scotty, do I have a second?
Just a second.
April, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. Recommendation to approve purchase of a lawn mower for the water department at a cost of forty-five hundred. We talked about this at the last meeting. We had two quotes on new ones, and one of them was for seventy-one hundred and forty-six dollars, and the other one was seventy-eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And if you remember, I mentioned at the meeting that we were looking for a good used one. And I got a call the next day from a local person that's in the yard business, and she had bought one, and it was not as big as she would like, and it still had all its warranty on it. It was sitting up here at the co-op, and she made us a real good price. In fact, we got it about twenty-two hundred dollars below, the lowest price on the new one. So I recommend that we approve the purchase of that lawn mower. Do I have a motion?
We, excuse me, we also got a warranty.
We got the little warranty.
Full warranty also, so.
The Husler.
That was a big savings. I'll put that motion through.
Francis, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Matt Davie, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. We have an air conditioning unit that we've been feeding Bray on, and I was told by Gary Nixon that he went over there and checked that we have probably clogs that unit was put in when the fire station was built. We have two cost estimates on replacing that unit, and one is from Northwest Alabama Heating, and it's for four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the other one is from Doug's Heating and Air Conditioning, and it's for fifty-three hundred. And these are five-ton rim, and it would be installed. So, I recommend that we go with the low quote of forty-four hundred and seventy-five dollars from Northwest Alabama Heating Company. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Matt Davie, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. We had an opening on the industrial board, and we appointed Mr. Mike Schatz to fill out that unexpired term, and he served less than a year, and it's time, is that term expired? So I recommend that we reappoint Mike Schatz to the Industrial Development Board with the term expiring August 2018. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Matt Davie, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. We also have an opening on the Hamilton City Zoning and Planning Commission. Mr. Bill Tyrell's appointment is up, and his top term expired in August. The world expired in August. So, Mr. Tyrell is serving as our chairman of that committee right now, and he's doing us a good job. And I recommend that we reappoint Mr. Tyrell to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board. Do I have a motion?
Let me make that motion.
Okay, Matt Davie, I'll say it. All right, Francis, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. We have a appointment on the appeals board. This is the board that would appeal any decision that the planning commission made or carry further than that a decision the city council made. The public does have the right to appeal it, and we are required to have an appeals board. And Ms. Lois Tate was servant on this board. Her term has expired, but she's also moved to Tupelo. So I recommend that we appoint Mike Hall to fill this position. His term will expire in August 2015. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Scotty, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Paul, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. We've got a city election coming up, the 28th of August, and our election officials have been getting a rate of pay of seventy-five dollars. And I understand that the other election officials are paid a hundred, and the city election officials in most of the towns close by are also paying a hundred dollars per day. So I recommend that we raise our election official's rate of pay from seventy-five to a hundred. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Matt Davie, do I have a second? Francis, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. Recommendation to approve resolution 2012-716 as follows. Whereas a regular municipal election has been called to be held on the 28th day of August 2012, and a runoff election to be held if necessary on the 9th day of October 2012, and whereas Section 114627 of the Alabama Code of 1975 as amended provides in part that the municipal governing body, not less than fifteen days before the holding of any municipal election, shall appoint from the qualified electors of the municipality officers to hold the election as follows. Where electronic ballot counters are used, at least one inspector and three clerks. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Hamilton, Alabama, that the election officers for set of action shall be as follows, with pay of a hundred dollars a day. The returning officer Ellis Cochran, the chief inspector Bill Giffords, the poll list clerk Noel Lowden, ballot clerk Ethan Wright. And the poll workers are Lisa Sanderson, Betty Riley, John Moore, Linda Pop, Becky Dodd, Shirley Brassfield, Austin Jones, Kavaleen Siget, Mike Schatz, LeVera Terrell, Barbara Ellis, Corinne Jones, Jean Holloway, Marshall Wilson, Molly Acott, and James Brassfield. Do we have to vote on that? Okay. I recommend that we approve the recommendation that's been presented here in this resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Paul, do I have a second?
Second.
Scotty, all in favor. Yeah, I say it. We, some time ago, purchased a historical landmark in the city of Hamilton. The city purchased the Hamilton Sullivan's house, and once the purchase was complete, the, some of the heirs of the benefit from the sale of the house turned around and donated their portion of the amount that they inherited back to the city. That totaled about twenty-five thousand dollars. That money was set aside in a separate account called the Hamilton Sullivan's account, but it's in the city's, where we have control of that money. The ones donating the money asked that this money be spent on the Hamilton Sullivan's house. At this time, part of that money is already being spent. They're in the process of doing a lot of work to the house right now, buying new wood, putting up new boards, making repairs. They're going to paint, put a new roof on it. And they've asked us to transfer the balance of this money that they contributed to this account. The heirs contributed to the account, which is twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eleven cents. Transfer it into a historical society account for the Hamilton Sullivan's house. And I recommend that we give them control of that money. Do I have a motion?
Was that tall? Four?
There were, there were three full, one full heir and three. There were four of them total, right? They donated their money back.
Yes.
Two full ones.
Two full.
You and your sister had one park, wasn't you? And then the other lady had one park, and then.
Okay.
One hand side.
High.
Okay. So we're looking at twenty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and eleven cents. Do I have a motion to?
I want a motion.
Francis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Matt Davie, all in favor.
Aye.
Yeah, I say it. At this time, we're happy to have Raywood Jackson with us. Mr. Jackson, ask for about fifteen minutes.
I hope us all in these. If I get started, no, if I get started and run over, Mayor, you just need to sit me down, tell me it's time to quit. I'm going to prop this right here so the audience can see it, and I'm going to give y'all a copy, but I'm a giver and a taker, and I'm going to take it back when I get through. I don't have about six of these. Matt Davie, sir, if you would help me with this, I appreciate everybody getting copies so while I'm talking, the council mayor can kind of see what I'm talking about. We also had some brochures printed up that I need to get some more copies made, and I'm going to. Let me say that I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know what kind of job you have and the toughness of the job, the day-to-day basis. Can't go to the grocery store, you can't go to church, you can't go to the bank, you can't go to Walmart, somebody that's needing something or wants something or got something they want, don't want to bother you, but get to talk to you just for a few minutes. And I, you know, I've been there, I know how that is. But I appreciate each and every one of you being willing to serve this community and the folks that are going to be running up. And as I said before, it's great to live in a country where you can still do this, get up and talk and express your opinion, and everybody's like, everybody's got a nose is, everybody's got one, so everybody's got an opinion. Brenna and I were riding down the highway about a year ago, and she said something about the chain link fence there by the high school that goes down Highway 43. Well, I know in the twelve years that I was superintendent, we replaced it twice, if not three times, the fence. And she said, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that look good for brick columns and a wrought iron fence, something that's lots stronger and that will stay there for a while? And I said, sure, that would look real good, but do you realize how much that might cost? And I, you know, I don't know for sure how much it might cost. I did get a quote from a gentleman that was in town putting a wrought iron fence around a pool for a person, and just the fencing itself is about fifteen thousand dollars probably. So we had a, we had a discussion, and we started talking, and I told her, I said, well, you don't ever get anything accomplished unless you try it and you start. Some, you got to start somewhere. So because Hamilton High School is important to us, she and I both are graduates there, some of you on this council are graduates, it's done a lot for us, and so therefore we want to try to do something back in return for this school. You know, this school is a focal point of this community. It's right here in town. That's unusual. You don't find many high schools or many schools of any kind right in town. And so we talked about, and then y'all got to talking about your downtown revitalization project. So we said, well, if we could tie what we're trying to do into maybe something that you're trying to do, then it would be, you know, it'd be great. I knew the Board of Education had hired Latham and Associates out of Birmingham as their architects, and we just happened to have a young lady that's a graduate of Hamilton High School that's an architect for them, Andrea Clinton Harbison. So I approached her and I said, Andrea, are you, are you ready to do a little free grass work for some folks? And so that's where we are. She has drawn the project, she not only has done her part free for us and got what you've got in your hands of these boards printed at no cost to us. Heath Avery, a local boy, has, and Mike Lindley, surveyor, has worked, both of them have worked on this project at no cost to the alumni association or anybody, just the fact that they wanted to do something to help Hamilton High School as well. But what we have is just, you know, preliminary plans. We're open to suggestions. We're open to any ideas that anybody has here in this audience or in the community. Alumni presented this at the alumni banquet back in June, and we got a little money, not much, that night, but people were not expecting it and didn't come prepared, did they? But since then, I've had one class that's come to me, and they're ready to write us a check. It'd be the Hamilton Aggie Plaza. We'll be, have a bank account, we'll be set up, we'll have a website, and they're ready to write a check, and they think they've got somewhere in the neighborhood of eleven, twelve hundred dollars in their checking account. We've got another donation of five hundred dollars already, so we're looking at opening the account, maybe tomorrow, with about sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars in it. We know that there's grants available. We're going to pursue that as well. But looking at what you have before you, the red area, of course, for the audience, this area right here, this is Alabama Fire, and that's First National. This is the high school facing north, the annex and the van hall here, the area that's in red in between is the plaza area. That's where the buses used to pull in to the school. And we, superintendent and board, moved those buses to the other side of the, of the van hall and the annex, so that's where they come in now. And this project will consist of wrought iron fencing down Highway 43 with brick columns going behind your pocket park, if we've known it all these years, coming back to Highway 17 and going down to the lower driveway of the middle school. It'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty, twenty-one columns. It will be brick columns that will be needed. And then in between the two buildings, the high school, the van hall, the annex, will be our plaza with brick pavers, shrubs, as I said, Heath Avery has worked on this project, Mike Lindley has surveyed it for us, shrubs, benches, outdoor education area so the teacher can take his or her class outside and have a class outdoors. We wanted to, be lights inside that that will come on automatically at night. We want to get our ag department to do a system of some kind to collect rainwater and then turn that and use it to water those shrubs and that kind of stuff, not trying to save money and pay the city anything, but we just need to conserve our funds, and we don't have much, and the schools don't have much, and you folks understand that, I know that. But we think this would, what does an industrial prospect won't look at when they first come to town? The schools, the hospitals, the appearance of your town. What it looks like, what your schools look like, what your health care is. Those are three things that they're interested in for their employers, that they want to see what you've got to offer. As I said, this school is the focal point of the town. And I think that we, and I think y'all as a, as a group, and as you're doing your downtown revitalization, maybe you can do something as far as a grant is concerned to help us with that fence around your, just your area there. If we could get just some help for that fence around that pocket park area so that we could tie it all together. Of course, Andrea has gone ahead and drawn some things for y'all too down there in that corner, and with a sign, an LED sign, electronic sign, some, a lot of things that she, a lot of good ideas that she had. And, you know, these, these donations, and anybody who wants to give can be tax deductible. It'd be made to the Hamilton Aggie Plaza in the name of a class. We will have flyers or pamphlets printed so that a class or a person wants to donate in memory of a teacher, of a parent, of a coach, of a principal, whomever, then they can do that, and we will put plaques on these different things, a tree, a bench, a column, whatever.
Have you thought about, from the columns where the fence are, selling plaques?
Yeah.
To go on them.
Yeah. Yeah. If you as a businessman, Scotty, donate us enough money to put up a column, we're going to put your name on it, whatever you want, yes.
Have you got a total estimate of what this is going to cost?
No. As I said earlier, just the fence itself, just the wrought iron, not the brick column.
I'd worry if you had a dollar and they broke it up and you just do the fence.
You know, we probably going to have to do it at the stages if we don't get a wealthy class or a wealthy person. If you notice, right across the street at the high school, a class of fifty-seven did that project, took it on themselves, cost them in the neighborhood about ten thousand dollars, but it looks great. It adds to the appearance of the campus. This will also do that, in my opinion. As I said, tax deductible, do it in memory of someone or in honor of someone, anything that you want to do, and we would let that person or that class decide how they wanted the plaque, what they wanted, how they wanted to read, and we'll put those plaques on there. But we think that it will certainly enhance the appearance of these schools, but also enhance the appearance of the town. And, you know, it's just, as I said, a brainstorm, an idea that we had, and it doesn't get done unless somebody takes the bull by the horn and tries to do it, and that's what we're trying to do. So, any help we can get, or any suggestion we can get, would be very much appreciated.
You probably said it, Raywood, coming down the side of 43, a fence, wrought iron fence with brick columns.
Yes.
Then it would cut in and go in behind the park.
Yes, and then down by the side park, and then down 17.
And then off to the exit, down 17, exit of the schools.
There's a little area there now that also has a chain link fence area around where the special needs kids have physical education, physical activities. That will probably be left, but by doing it the way we're talking about, it will really set it off, of putting that fence around that pocket park area as well.
Maybe nobody would be able to put up signs up on there.
Somebody asked, what were you going to do about it? We'll let y'all worry about that, and the police department, whatever, how you want to handle that, but I know it's an advertising area down through there and.
Well, if you had the smart key signs, that could take care of it.
Yeah, it could. That fence, if you notice, is right on the sidewalk. We probably can't back it off much, but we're going to back it off as much as we can away from that sidewalk, get it back just a little, and, you know, the sign at the, at the middle school is already up, and so we, we just think it's something that could be really beneficial to not only our, our schools, but to the town as well. We'd love to work with y'all, want to work with y'all, and try and do all that we can. And I, again, want to say thank you to Andrea, and Heath, and Mike Lindley, and all the people that have done all this work at no cost to anybody, but just their town.
Raywood, I'm so happy to see that your group, that you've got a group of people that are supporting you and doing these, because I really feel like with downtown revitalization, if we pursue that project, and you pursue this project.
Yes.
This is going to catch on.
I think so.
It's going to be contagious.
I hope so.
And make a big difference in the way the town looks.
But if I understood it correctly, you come down to this corner right here, you go all the way to the courthouse, and then you make a T up there between Lowden's, Furniture and John Lowden's place. So, you know, you're coming down to nearly the, well, just across the street from the school.
That'll actually tie in with the football field, because they're talking about doing the same thing to the front down here.
Yeah, okay, okay, didn't know that, but that's great, yeah.
Are the sidewalks down through here, are they in, are they in pretty good shape?
Yeah.
They're okay?
Yeah.
That fence catches all the litter that comes from the school from the highway.
It does.
And it's hard to get it cleaned up.
As I said, I know it's, when I, the twelve years I served as superintendent, I know we replaced it twice, and we may have replaced it a third time. It just, it just won't stay up there, and we need something more attractive, we need something a lot sturdier or stronger. So we feel like this might be the route to go.
We've been discussing trying to clean the town, you know, there's so much, so much litter around that we're trying to attack. So this right here, looking at it, maybe that could catch on.
And if there's anybody.
We applaud you.
Well, thank you.
All we're doing and taking this under, my goodness, this is a big.
I like to see, you know, those buildings are old across the street. The high school was occupied in 61. The middle school was built in 1938 by WPA workers, but through, through, it is the oldest school in the county. The UN elementary school is the next oldest. It was built the year after that. That building though is in good shape. We rewired it, we put new metal roof on it, we've done new restrooms on the inside. That was all done while I was superintendent. Of course, you know the work that we did over here across the street. The buildings are in good shape, structurally, and I've got to say this, and then I'll sit down. Our principals of those two schools have done a great job in showing and making sure the kids take a little pride in their school buildings and want to keep them up. I remember very well, and Paul does too, the old school and the bathrooms, and, you know, it was just a cool thing, go in there and ride on the walls. Bill, you probably never did do that, but I would advise you to go in Hamilton High School.
Clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were the first class and graduate.
Yeah, yeah. Y'all started in January, actually, we came back from the Christmas holidays, and their school prom was held in the, in the hallway that year. So, that goes back a ways, but the buildings are, and as I told the folks in the State Department a long time ago, State Superintendent, we don't get new schools in Marion County unless they burn or blow away. And that's, and that is safe, but that's, that's the way that it is. And, you know, the board is doing the best they can, you're doing the best you can. You got to live within your means. So if you, if you don't have the funds, you got to just do what you can do, and that's all you can do. And I applaud y'all for what you do. Thank you.
I have to say for myself, and I feel like I'm speaking for the whole council, we support you in this effort.
Appreciate it.
And, of course, we'll be talking to you some. And of course, we'll be talking to you some more about that.
We're really gonna start the next, we've been trying to go through a house renovation at my place too for the last four or five months. So my mind hasn't been on this as much as it, it needs to be, but we're gonna get it on it and we're gonna start doing some contacting of class officers, going back as many years as we can find names and addresses and trying to see if they can light a fire under their class to try to do something to help in return for what, for what Hamilton High School has done for them and what the City of Hamilton has done.
Well, we appreciate it.
We want to do that. I'll pick those up.
Andrea and Mike.
Haven't you got that 70's reunion coming up?
It's Saturday night, I was gonna ask.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be there, we're gonna have somebody speak, yes.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Jackson? Any questions? I have a motion.
I'll make that motion. I didn't hear the question.
Pardon?
Is there any questions, are you asking questions from the floor yet or?
I asked for questions for Mr. Jackson, yes.
I'm sorry.
Do you address the council?
Well, not obvious.
I have one. You know that the pocket park has the bricks on the ground that's in memory of and so on. Are you gonna have anything like that in that? The bricks that have that on?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
Mr. Johnson, did you call, I had to get on the agenda?
I didn't know I had to.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've just got one quick question. The roof was torn off of the Hamilton Holiday Hotel down here in the last couple of weeks. I called the mayor's office asking about if there had been an asbestos test to make sure there was no asbestos in those roof panels down there, those fibers, which referred over to Baron Wigginton. After 10 days, I finally got ahold of Wigginton, Baron, and he assured me that, that there was no asbestos in there. And yet, the time that building was built, it was common practice for asbestos to be used in roof panels. Did the city actually check to see if there was asbestos in there?
Did you talk to Baron?
I did.
Well, I've not talked to Baron. If he told you there was no asbestos, I would, I would think he checked it.
Well, does areas, there a way to check it? Does the city have the facilities to check it?
If we, if we needed to, we could, we could have it. We're not going to get into a discussion of that tonight.
No ma'am, you're never willing to get into a discussion with anything with me, but what amazes me is that 6,000 plus people could have been affected by asbestos roof fiber, fibers flying around this city. And in 10 days it took me to get an answer from Wigginton, which I had keep calling him. But yet, in six and a half hours, you put the shelter out of business. And I want to thank you for your commendable efforts in cleaning up the downtown.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Scotty made a motion to adjourn down, have a second?
I'll say.
Mike David, all in favor?
Aye.